Calling the meeting to order. Happy New Year, everybody. It's good to see you, even if it's just virtually. I'd like to, well, actually, do we need to take attendance, Sarah? I can just read out the names if that's easy.
Okay.
We got from the board, Dwayne Stanley, Roger Jarrett, Greg Theos, Sheila Kelly, Bella Gorman, Evan Zervarowski, Jill Schaper, and Maura Webster. I didn't miss anybody. And we got more at twice. And I would like to appoint a timekeeper. Anybody want to volunteer to be our timekeeper? Should be easy today.
I can do that.
All right, I'll be our timekeeper today. Thank you. Bella, did we receive any requests for public comment? Doesn't look like we did, so not being public comment. We'll move through the consent agenda. Everybody probably got a chance to look at the budget updates and what's attached. Does anybody want to discuss that or bring that out of consent agenda? If not, then we'll move on. And somebody just joined us. So I'm gonna take, to start our votes, I'm gonna start with the STEM Soaring Eagles vote first, just to give a chance of Chris to drop out if he wants to. Of course, he's welcome to stay, yes, for the whole meeting. But I think we may have mentioned this in the last meeting. There's a nomination for a new director of STEM Soaring Eagles Foundation. And they had, you know, the Development Committee and some of the folks, including Marcy, met with the candidate. And there's a vote on the table to approve that nomination. So I'll let Chris introduce her or, you know, anything you want to say before we take the vote.
Okay, yeah, great. Well, thank you very much, Raul. So I want to, I guess it was October was the last time I was in to kind of touch base with you all. And so where we're at now is that since the beginning of this academic year, we spent a fair amount of time talking with Lisa and with Marcy about the foundation and where to go with it and how we want it to contribute to the campaign and to the school. And we've, we just kind of began those conversations. But first, we needed to, we're really grossly understaffed in terms of how many directors that we need. Our directors, our bylaws tell us that we need to have between five and 12 directors. And we only had four. So bringing Gina on brought us to the five, which, you know, technically we're supposed to have. And Gina comes to us from Bank of America, where she's got a pretty extensive background in private wealth management and in commercial lending, especially small business. And so it's, you know, the kinds of networks that she can tap into are very relevant to the task at hand in terms of developing constituencies for the capital campaign. Also, we wanted to be careful. We want to take a couple of steps forward, getting good standing with our bylaws. But we really need to take a look at what, what do we want the foundation to be? How do we want it to work? And who do we need to be involved in it? And so we're really setting aside this spring as a time to make those decisions. So we're planning to meet two or three times between now and June and come out with that with a, you know, with a kind of mission vision and guiding principles and some agreements on what the foundation should be and how we want to develop it going forward. And so there'll be some, some real content to provide you with later in the spring. In the meantime, we want to get started. And having Gina on board will help us to do that. So I understand you've seen her resume. So I think she's very highly qualified. She's personally known to Craig Holbrook. And we're very excited to have her. She'll be joining us at the end of this month, assuming that she passes muster this evening. So that's about it. I just want to thank you all for paying attention. And we're really looking forward to getting the foundation squared away as a really, as a maximum, its maximum potential for supporting, for supporting the school.
Thank you, Chris. And I know some of the discussions we've been having with development is, you know, how do we make sense of what the foundation does versus the Development Committee and the Capital Campaign Committee? And we're trying to streamline that to not have too many pockets of meetings and organizations and, you know, be more efficient. So, you know, part of that, what you're discussing will happen between now and, you know, the spring is defining that together. So not just the STEM Soaring Eagles Foundation, but also the Development Committee, whether that continues to be a full committee or we find some different structure to do that. So I'll let Maura talk about that if she's ready for that. But, you know, this is part of it. Strengthening the foundation is part of that, regardless of how we end up doing that. So I think it's a good idea to continue to be recruiting. And as I understand, Lisa, I don't know who else was part of that meeting. I think Darren was, but Darren's not here with us. You guys did have a meeting either with Gina herself or to talk about that nomination or?
No, we did not meet with Gina. But Chris and I had with Leanna a really, really strong meeting and kind of reviewed, almost created, reviewed a job description for being on the Board of STEM Soaring Eagles. That, like Chris said, after we kind of vetted through the group that's currently there, we'll launch it with, you know, through the Board or with the Board of Trustees and fill you in on that. But it was a really productive meeting. And we really kind of aligned our thoughts around having STEM Soaring Eagles be the right hand of the development's left hand so that we, you know, we have a strong foundation that, you know, our community believes in and wants to, wants to contribute to.
Anybody have any other comments about Gina's nomination or about what we're doing with the foundation? If not, then I'll take a motion to approve, I guess I use her full formal name, Eugenia Navokin, as a STEM Soaring Eagles Foundation member, director.
I'll second. So that was the motion?
I guess I can make a motion, yes, sure.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I made a motion, Bella seconds.
That was Bella or Sheila?
Bella.
Bella. All right.
Take the call.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Wayne Stanley?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Evan?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura? Jeff? Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
And Salmini?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Well, congratulations Gina, congratulations Chris, and strengthening and growing the board. And looking forward to hear more about all the work you guys are doing.
All right, we'll get to work and report back.
Excellent.
Great, and I'm gonna excuse myself because I can.
Go ahead, have a good evening.
Have a nice night, everybody.
Thanks for joining us, Chris. Good night. All right, next vote, approval of minutes from our last meeting on November 30th. Does anybody have any questions or I'll take a motion for approval of minutes?
This is Sheila. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Roger, second.
Hey, Roger. All right, I will call. Bella?
Yes.
Wayne?
I'll abstain.
Oh, you're gonna abstain, yep. Evan?
Yes.
Great.
I'll also abstain, seeing as I wasn't there.
Jill?
Yes.
Maura? Maura?
Maura, some mute.
Yes, okay. Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
And Salmini?
Abstain.
All right.
And motion passes, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Maura, are you, you're ready for a capital campaign update? And do you want to do that with development later on the agenda?
I have a deep announcement update announcement that I can share. And I don't know if you thought you're gonna dig into it a little bit more. But we ran, we believe Marcy ran an end of the year giving campaign online.
Can you understand?
Yeah, Maura, it's a little far or I'm not sure if you can do something.
Garbled, I can't understand a word.
Okay, how's this? Is this any better?
Oh, yes. There we are.
Okay, excellent. So I just wanted to sort of highlight the work Marcy did on an end of the year giving campaign with online gifts. We brought in $10,000, well, $10,428 in new online gifts. And I believe that was from 50 different donations that that total amount came in through end of the year giving, specifically from our school community. But I want to highlight that because I think it's really important to, one, as a board, recognize our school community for stepping up and participating in the fundraising. There's gonna be much more of it down the road. But I think it's just such a great testimony to the work that the committee has been doing. Seeing the ground taking shape is also great. And Marcy's been doing a terrific job, really communicating and updating folks. And communication is key when it comes to this. So I just want to say thank you to all of those families and friends of AMSA families that have donated so far. And let's keep up the good work.
Excellent. Any questions for Maura? So then, Dr. Mobley, your executive director report?
Yes, so there really wasn't anything on the agenda for January. But what I thought I would do is take advantage of January and talk a little bit about tuition. So I'm going to share my screen. Hold on, I'm gonna bring it up. Made a little presentation for you. Okay, so you all can see it now, I believe. Let's see. Okay. I thought it was important to just kind of give a little, very quick budget primer on how charter schools are funded because it was confusing to me when I first got here. And we have some new board members. And I also think it helps our community understand why, as a public school, we have a capital campaign and we have annual giving drives. And, you know, we're asking our communities to contribute financially. So the budget approach for traditional public schools is that they look at their student needs, they look at their staffing, whether or not they need to add staffing, whether or not they need to add equipment. And they create, typically it's called a needs-based budget, and it's based on student needs. And there's no limit to that budget. They take that budget to the Finance Committee of the town for the blessing, and then they take it to town meeting. There is a minimum level of spending that each town is required to meet, and that's called their financial, their foundation level of spending. And that's important to AMSA as a charter school because that's how, that's one of the, one of the pieces on how our tuition is based. When towns spend above that foundation level, it's called net school spending. So they go to town meeting, the town votes on the budget. Their budget's either approved or it's amended on town meeting floor. For us here at AMSA, we have, we take, or the state takes the foundation level of our sending towns. And then they minus some costs that really don't apply to charter schools. They minus, if, if one of our sending towns pays for like retirement health insurance, they take that out of the foundation level. If their costs, whatever their costs are for out-of-district tuition, they take that out of the foundation level because AMSA doesn't pay for retirement insurance, nor do we pay out-of-district tuition beyond the year if a student is placed out. So then they, and I called that, instead of just calling it the foundation base, it gets a little confusing, I called that the charter foundation base rate. So then they divide that charter foundation base rate by the number of students from that town. And that's the first part, that's the first dollar amount that we get for tuition. There are two other components. They look at the school's net school spending and they calculate the percentage above the foundation level. So if, you know, Marlboro or Hudson or Clinton or Maynard are spending 10% above their foundation level, we would get 10% per student to calculate into our tuition. So they apply that percentage to the charter foundation base, which raises that base just a little bit. And that is the tuition portion of what AMSA receives. Net school spending and the amount of money spent above foundation level is a really important concept because when the federal government provides additional monies to traditional public schools and they don't have to ask for more money from the town, meaning they don't have a high net school spending, that results in lower tuition rates for charter schools. So when ESA came along and all of the different towns received ESA money, if they use that instead of, let's say, town taxpayer money, it decreased net school spending, which decreased the amount of tuition that charters get. The third and final piece, they keep it a little separate, is called the facilities tuition rate. And basically, the state derives this from the average of statewide spending on school buildings since charters are not able to access any school building funds. The Charter Public School Association has been really working hard to increase this rate. Past couple of years, they've, they've achieved quite a bit of success on that. It's still not at 100% of what they promised. And you will see coming out in the advocacy campaign soon in February that we're going to be working as an organization, charter schools across the state of Massachusetts, to continue to ask for more, more money in the facilities tuition rate because they're still not funding us at the promised level. So that's basically the calculation. So the formula is taking the town's foundation level funding, and that's based on Chapter 70, a very complicated formula. But then creating our foundation base rate, receiving a percentage above the traditional public school's foundation budget, and then the facilities tuition rate. And when you wrap that all up, we get the per pupil tuition calculated that way. And again, I just thought it was important to kind of walk through it because we do ask, you know, for our families to contribute and for local businesses and other people that believe in the wonderful work that AMSA does to support us. And this is the reason why, is we can't go to town meeting and ask for additional monies. Did I just make a question?
Can I just add, Lisa?
Yeah, please.
That, um, that we are reliant on what our sending towns spend on their, per student. And if one sending town spends a lot less and we have a greater proportion of students from that sending town, it impacts our tuition.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, and by the way, it's in the opposite way that you would expect because my intuition said if somebody spends less money, there's more money available to give to charter schools. And that's not the case. If they spend less money, we get less.
Exactly, exactly. So I'll be doing probably a little screencastify in my next newsletter to share this with families as well because I think it's important that our families understand how AMSA is funded. I had a wonderful luncheon today with the Marlboro Rotary and shared this information with them, shared information about our student internships and some of the work that, you know, our computer science students will be doing as a partner with Cloudwave. So we just found, formulated a new partner with Cloudwave. And they're actually gonna be giving some kind of project-based work to our students to work on. Panaja is working hard with them on that. And we just talked about how, you know, AMSA's core values are around community. And our students and staff are here to help out in the community. And if we can help the Rotary in any way, we're there for them. And to thank them for the scholarships that they offer our students at the end of the year because they do a really nice job offering our students scholarships. So it's a very productive luncheon today. And they were very interested in, you know, how we're funded and, you know, the perception of, that's out there, that, you know, we, we take, we just take money from schools. I think the other important point that's not in this presentation is that for the first few years, a good chunk of the money is refunded back to the sending districts. And that amount of money lessens over the years till it comes to zero. But the, the traditional public schools that can, you know, send students to AMSA for those first few years, they do get tuition reimbursement. And that's important. Anyone else have any questions or anything they want to add?
I just wanted to add, thank you for the overview. And I think that's a very good idea to send that information out to, you know, parents of the students because it gives a lot more perspective on where we're coming from as opposed to what they might be used to with their students in public schools.
Yeah, thank you. Other than that, we had a wonderful holiday gathering with, I'm gonna say, at least 90% of the staff that came on the Friday before we left for break. Everybody definitely seems rested and the smiling faces are all around the campus. You know, I think there was, there's a little excitement for the snow this weekend. I am personally glad that it is Saturday into Sunday and not Sunday into Monday. And, you know, my former superintendent said, just wait till you have to deal with snow, Lisa. So I'm really glad that it's Saturday into Sunday. But we, we've met as a team when we discussed the process regarding delays and cancellation. And we're gonna be putting some stuff out to our families as well, just so that they have a heads up.
I'm sure the students are looking forward to hearing your voice announce us know they.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I, I might do some tricks and, you know, tweet it out or not tweet it out, but Instagram it out. I don't know if any of you heard about my Elf on the Shelf happening, but we did do Elf on the Shelf for two weeks at AMSA. And I, I have to say, the kids were really excited about it. They loved, they loved Finding Ralph and they got a prize. And I get to meet a lot of kids that way. So it was really, it was a lot of fun for me. So, but thank you, thank you for letting me present tonight.
Any questions or comments for Lisa? Yeah, and again, thank you for education. By the way, since I use the term education, which I guess we don't use enough on this board, I keep in mind, and, and, you know, this is in general, not for, just for today, but in general, if there's anything that as a trustee, you feel, you know, I'm not really sure I understand how this works or maybe everybody else knows this, but I don't or whatnot, feel free to bring that up, whether it's during the meeting or an email or whatnot. Because one of the things that I think we could do, and we've actually been talking a little bit about this in governance, is do a little bit more board education as part of our board meetings. And actually gonna bring something up later, but especially with the charter renewal coming up, anything that, that you think might be relevant is something that, that we should probably be a little bit more formal about. So nothing specific to share on that, but just, I'm just making the ask. If you think of something, you know, let us know and, you know, let me know. And then we'll, we'll find our way to make that part of our ongoing, you know, keeping the board educated. Board education, I think is, is something that we can pay a lot of more attention to this year.
Raul, before we move on, I don't know that, I think we'll put it in a separate section, but we do have a building update for you. So if it's not further in the agenda, we can turn it over to Leanna. She put together a nice presentation for the board regarding the new.
Oh, yes, please. No, I don't think we do, we have the, the regular budget updates as part of the consent agenda, but we don't have anything else on the agenda, so.
All right, so let's turn it over to Leanna for the, for the building.
I think to share, do we need to make her co-host?
I need sharing access.
Yep.
I think Lisa can do that as a co-host, right?
I think Sarah just did it, correct, Sarah?
Nope, but I can.
Okay, fantastic.
Share, okay, I'll make you a co-host. Okay?
Screen share. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
With the AMSA logo?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so quick little building update. There is a lot going on at the school. Did it switch to the next slide?
No.
Ah. It worked before I shared my screen. All right, let me do something else. Sorry about this. Let's start sharing this one.
If you want to share it with me, Leanna, maybe I can move it for you if it doesn't work this time, no problem.
All right, can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Oh, and it's still not letting me. Okay, anyway, there's a lot going on. Let's see if I can click to the next slide. There we go. So I don't know if you've been on campus or not lately, but the foundation has been entirely poured. This is just some shots that I did around the school, showing different angles of the foundation. So then, this right here is the elevator shaft. And over break, the elevator shaft needed to be reworked because it was discovered that the installation didn't cover, didn't install a vapor barrier. So they needed to dig all of that up and redo it. So that's done. And this, over break, there was a huge drainage system installed. I don't know if you can see this angle, but this is where the old student parking used to be, now the staff park here. And all of this was dug up and repaved. And a drainage system was installed under there, except for one small section, which we discovered the drainage system is actually designed over the main, the gas main. So that we need to get the gas company out there and relocate that about five feet on one side to the other so they can finish that. And then we are, the construction company, along with AMSA, is working with the utility companies. As you can see, there's some manhole cover right here. And we're working with them to get all of the necessary utilities. We've got National Grid, N-Star, the water company, all of those things going right now, trying to get everything in place. There's a quick little note that we are still working with National Grid. I don't know if you guys are aware, but there was a, we, when they started digging up the foundation, the existing duct bank for 201 was above the surface of where the road is gonna go. So we've decided that that needs to get connected into the new building duct bank, which is the electrical, and we're going to remove the old bank. And then my last little slide is we're still on track. We're still on track to be completed in January 2025 with a goal to be completed by the holiday break in December of 2024. And we are still on budget.
Those are the best words I can, anybody can hear, on time, on budget.
Any questions? All right.
So it's good to see our dream come true little by little.
Yes, it is.
And I gotta say, you know, to, I'm trying to keep it positive, but one of the things that I was crossing my fingers when we had those torrential rains and that big storm, and I lost power in my house for like six hours. And I kept thinking, we're gonna hear something happen at AMSA, there was a flooding or something. And, and all the investments that we made recently to avoid this smog flooding and, and all that. It sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, we survived on skates from that storm, right? So it only delayed the project or caused any other issues in the facility, so. I'm glad it's the case.
The project was fine, the roof on 199, not so much.
All right, well, hopefully nothing major that we have to act immediately, right?
Correct.
All right. That's, that, that's all I'm hoping for. Excellent. Thank you for the update. And I think it's good to keep an eye on the building coming up. Like I said, seeing our dream come true. Any comments from anybody on Leanna or Lisa's report? Thank you for sharing. It's always good to hear what's going on at the school. All right, so with that, moving on to the agenda, I'm gonna welcome again Dwayne Stanley. All right. So with that, moving on the agenda, I'm going to welcome again Dwayne Stanley to our, as our parent representative. And since the update since our last meeting, when we, we accepted to, to let, you know, to uh, approve Dwayne as our parent rep, that we received confirmation from the commissioner on that appointment. So you're now formally a full voting trustee on the board. So this is the time we'll give you to talk about anything you might be hearing from parents or anything you might want to put in your parent representative report, Dwayne.
Yeah. So again, thank you guys for including me. Um, since the last time I, I really haven't had a chance to, to reach out to parents yet. Um, based on the break and everything that was going on, but I'm looking forward to twenty twenty four and what I hear from, from parents and, um, also from you guys too. Like I, I think it should be two-way communication if parents are coming out and they're asking for things and, um, you, you guys should also be able to ask the community for things as well. And I, I just want to be the conduit to help you guys and just make AMSA better.
Excellent. Well, that's the spirit and, and that's, that's your intention as well to make this a two-way communication. Thank you. Welcome again. I know that the, the break is probably a quiet period for that, but I'm sure that will change shortly. And with that, I don't know if teachers are as quiet as, as parents, but, uh, Greg, anything for the faculty, faculty side? And hopefully I did just your written report from last, uh, month. So if there's anything I missed, feel free to, to add.
I, I don't think so, not to my, or at least not to my knowledge. Um, your intuition about the quietness is correct because, uh, blessedly perhaps, I don't have much to report. Um, December is always a hectic time and then right after December, everyone is usually just kind of readjusting and trying to get back to work after two weeks. So nothing, nothing major has gone on, at least that I know of.
Excellent. I've been trying to figure out what your, the topic of your wife were behind you is about, but maybe that'll, that'll be a trivia question for the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can leave it to the end.
All right. Well, thank you for that report. Uh, any comments from anybody for faculty or parent reps? So I guess we're flying through the agenda today. Good job, Evan, with, with timekeeping. Um, so which brings to chair business. So, uh, let me start with the negotiation task force. So as you guys know, we, it feels like we just finished our, um, negotiation of the, the union contract with the department chairs. And as you know, we said that part of the purpose did a one-year term to make sure that the next time we, we have a renewal, we do that along with the, the other union, the, the, the teacher union. So right about now, we need to start those discussions and those negotiations. So I'm going to appoint negotiation task force. I'm going to say I'm going to appoint the first members of the negotiation task force, but I'm going to also mention that we should include at least one additional trustee and I'll explain why. But for now, it's going to be myself, uh, Roger and Jill from the, from the board. And of course, we'll welcome, as, as normal, we will work with Lisa and Leanna, Mike, uh, from the, from the administrator, administration side. Uh, I say that I, I hope that we can add another trustee because at least speaking for myself and Jill, our terms will finish by the end of the school year. And we think it's important to have somebody from the board that will stay past the June thirtieth day. So I, I don't want to call anybody out or anybody on the spot to, to, uh, volunteer right now. But if you're interested, if you're available and, you know, if, if anybody wants to be part of that negotiation task, where I think it's important to have anybody from the board that will be here come July first, uh, just for continuity purpose, uh, for this negotiation. So I'll leave it at that unless anybody wants to volunteer out here already, but Jill, anything you want to add?
Uh, how many people were, so it's just, so from a continuity perspective, all three of you would be then stepping away from that negotiations task, task force? Is that correct?
Well, so Roger's the owner, so my term is up June thirtieth. Jill's is off June thirtieth and I think we're actually going to borrow the time from Jill, but.
Yeah.
And, and Roger, you can renew, right? Can you correct where, where you are on the?
No, I'm, I, my term as treasurer also ends at June thirtieth, but I volunteered to continue on the negotiation committee as a member of the finance committee past June thirtieth. But I wouldn't, I will no, I will also, uh, my board member term expires at June thirtieth.
Right, but that wouldn't be as a tr- a voting trustee.
Right, I, as, I could be a member of the task force participating in negotiations, but I would no longer be voting as a trustee on any final agreement.
Exactly.
So just providing continuation and a finance perspective pass after June thirtieth.
Does that make sense, How many?
Yeah.
Any reason why you're asking? All right, we, we can talk offline.
We can talk, yeah.
All right.
And whoever else is interested, I guess, I'm just thinking about, well, what do you do to make sure that we're shadowing correctly and bringing back stuff and how much, you know, everyone's busy, I'm sure, but just making sure that we have the right expertise passed along and, uh, so also good to have Lisa, of course, who's bringing a whole different perspective as well. So that's appreciated. Um, yeah, I'm happy to chat offline.
And, and it's a good example of something we, I know we're talking governance, which is our, our constant recruitment efforts to make sure that we're we're thinking about succession for the board and, you know, people that will be stepping down by the end of the year and so I know we're working on that, but, you know, re- board recruitment is also something that, that we need to be aware of and constantly thinking about. But this is a good example of why.
So for those of you just appointed and anyone else that wants to shadow, I am looking to schedule a strategy meeting on Monday, January eighth, because the union has already submitted the request to bargain. So I received that before break and, um, it's, I think, important to them to start as soon as we can. So if you could shoot me what your availability would be, our, uh, attorney is available from about ten o'clock to two o'clock on Monday. And we need a two-hour window for a strategy session to look at basically our proposals, um, and strategize.
And I just wanted to add, does everybody know we hired a new law firm?
Well, I know we're in the process.
I wasn't aware. Yeah.
Okay. So we aren't working with, um, Joe Bartulis anymore. And Lisa, you can elaborate maybe on the status of our negotiations, but we definitely have a new attorney, which I think will really help the negotiation process.
Yeah, and, and I think that that even, um, starts from this, uh, uh, strategy session. So we are working with Murphy Hesse to me. And our primary attorney is, uh, Andy Waugh. And we're, and he's backed up by Sarah Sfatifor. Uh, we interviewed, uh, two firms. And it was unanimous to go with, uh, Murphy Hesse. Um, primarily because of how they talked about the just organization and, uh, communication. And that really delayed the ADC contract work a lot. Uh, there, the communication back and forth, the not having one single document working on all these different documents. So, you know, our goal for sure is to wrap this up well before June. Um, but negotiations are just that, the negotiations and both sides have to, you know, kind of come to the middle and understand, you know, what, what's available. Um, so, uh, as I said, Andy has time. So if you can, if you wanted to put it in the chat, Roger, just put it in the chat. You can come virtually or in person. Um, Andy will be coming to AMSA on, uh, January eighth. And, uh, but we can, we can dial you in and we have been working behind the scenes, Mike, um, uh, Amanda Sensi, myself, Leanna. Um, you know, reviewing the current contract, looking for language that, you know, maybe has been difficult for the school and administration to work through. Um, I, you know, from our perspective, you know, I don't think that we're going to have a lot of, of asks, but there's some language that we could use to get cleared up. Um, so, yeah, so if you're a bit virtual, I will send a link and that's not a problem.
And, and just to be clear, Lisa, the request for bargaining we got was from the teacher union.
Yes, I, I've spoken with Pam Asha and I have asked her to hold off. Um, because we spend so much time on language with the ADC contract, it's pretty solid. And I think that, I, I think that what will happen to extend their, to, 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 you know, provide them a three-year contract, it, that will end up being around finances and money. And it's pretty difficult for us to make any kind of decisions for seven people when we don't know what we're doing with, let's say, the hundred and thirty-three others, um, or a hundred and fifteen others. Um, and so they're willing to let us get, uh, the teacher contract work through first. And if at some point we think we can then do things simultaneously, we will move to do that as well.
Excellent. All right. Well, looking forward to having a, a good discussion that's beneficial to all sides and for the betterment of the school as a whole.
Right.
All right. Um, with that, the next, um, I guess discussion point is about our strategic planning meetings. So if you guys might remember by, uh, January twenty seventh, which is a Saturday, we have our strategic planning meeting. Uh, we don't have a lot of details to share at this point. Actually, Lisa and I are going to meet, well, at least Lisa and I are going to meet in the next, uh, week or so to, to plan ahead for that. But one thing that I can share, uh, we're going to do something similar to what we did last year to try to meet probably at the school for, uh, for, you know, most of the morning. You know, well, we'll plan specifically about how long and, you know, what, what are the activities that we're going to do. But if you remember one of the things we talked, for those of you that were involved, we, we're trying to put the strategy as a long-term thing that doesn't feel like a repetitive process where we do the same thing every year. We're trying to build on what we've done in the past. I'm actually happy to say that there's a lot of, uh, progress that we've made. You know, we talked a lot about goals for the committees in, in this meeting and I've seen, you know, finance and education have, have been very good at documenting them in, in board on track and we have governance as well there. So we, I think we can take those goals as something that we are working on for this year and more think about more the longer-term vision and the strategy for the school. And if you remember when we started putting together a strategy on a page, we had a mission, kind of the objectives in the middle, but then other things that we hadn't really talked much about, like performance indicators, how are we going to measure our success? What's your competitive advantage? What are the organization-wide strategies that we're going to focus on? We can't let that as the next level, you know, since we agree that that strategy on a page format was a good thing to think about. Uh, I think, and again, this is just, uh, we need a little bit more planning for how we're going to do this on, on the twenty seventh. But the focus will be on those things, you know, let's, yes, we can talk about defining our goals and what, how can we evolve the goals that we already have into lower-term goals and whatnot. But I think this is an opportunity for us to step back and think about beyond those goals. What are those things that we want to measure? What's a competitive advantage? Because it's something that's part of that, that overall strategy that's not just about goals. So more details to come, but, you know, if you haven't already, please block that time on that Saturday, twenty seventh. Um, the typical time we do this is at nine o'clock, but, um, we'll, we'll provide the details, uh, as we get closer to that. And, and I know we, you know, we work together on making that the most productive and at least it's a good excuse to get everybody together in person uh, for the first time in twenty twenty four. So looking forward to that, uh, to not being snowed out as much as we're looking forward to some snow, but, uh, will be a, a good time. Any questions about that or any comments of those of you that have not been involved and not really sure what you're getting yourself into? Basically, this is more about thinking about the long-term, uh, vision for the school. So we'll, we'll make it worth it. Um, excellent. Um, we did have the vote about, um, the soaring eagles, having a new soaring eagles member. But the other thing, and, and at least I don't think I'm going to make this a formal appointment yet because I haven't been able to talk to, you know, the folks that could potentially take this role, but I, I'm just going to introduce the idea that we've been talking, like I said, with, uh, how do we revamp the development committee, you know, compared to the capital campaign committee and the the Stemsor Eagles Foundation. And one of the things that we thought it would be a good idea is to have somebody from the board be officially the liaison or the point of contact with the Stemsor Niels Foundation. It makes sense for that to be somebody in the development committee or the development chair, but I didn't just want to assume that. So I want to make sure that we have that discussion, uh, more, uh, before, before we make that any, uh, formal appointment. So the way we put it in the agenda is to appoint somebody to be that liaison. But what I'm going to do for now is just to say that we will be making that appointment and that kind of role is, is something that we're creating, uh, which is just formalizing the fact that we need to work together with the, the, the foundation. I think, you know, for now, we've been somewhat independent and the, the foundation has been kind of a financial construct for people to make donations. But we're trying to structure that a little bit more to make sure that we work together more to, to, um, to do some work, to, to find those grants, to find the money and, you know, growing the foundation is one of the examples. And that's why we appointed a new, uh, member today. So that those are the kinds of things that the liaison would, would stay in touch with somebody like Chris, uh, to make sure we do that. So the idea, and just to explain very briefly, what we can have is a quote-unquote job description for that liaison is to focus on communication and coordination with foundation. Uh, to help, which is definitely part of what development does in general, partnership development. You know, who are the next goals for opportunities for partnership in the community, whether it's individuals or organizations or anything that can help with development in general. And then of course be part of strategic planning, not just for the board, but also for the foundation itself. So that, that's what that kind of construct is, is just formalizing something that we should be doing more of, which is working together between the foundation and, and the development committee. So that being said, I'm going to stop short of actually making an appointment because again, I haven't really confirmed, uh, the availability of, of those that could take that job. But if, if you're interested, Lisa, let me know offline, you know, um, send me an email or anything, um, and then we'll, we'll talk about that.
And I just wanted to take a second and thank everybody on the board. Uh, Marcy isn't here tonight, but, uh, they, we did achieve a hundred percent board giving. And, um, you know, that, that's critical to when we are asking other folks to support us. And this liaison position is the same way. When, when we tie to, formally tie together the foundation, the board and, you know, the, uh, the school leadership, then we are more cohesive when we're going out asking for folks to support us. Um, so we've been working really hard to kind of revamp that and also create this message of, you know, we believe in AMSA and, uh, we want you to believe in us too. So, um, looking forward to continuing that work.
Awesome. All right. The next thing, I, I don't have on the agenda, but I did want to mention something since I brought it up earlier about, uh, potential board, um, training topics. So one thing that I, I, you know, we haven't really put it on, on the schedule, but I do think it's important to, to think about this and maybe we'll, we'll talk about it as we do strategic planning, is the charter renewal. So what does the charter renewal entail? What do we have to do? What do we have to familiar ourselves with? So instead of giving everybody homework and go figure out a charter and, and then come back to us, I think it might make sense to use some of our board meeting time to, to that board education. So I'll take that as a, a, an action item for myself to plan out. How do we do, um, that kind of board education? When, when in the calendar should we do that? And who's going to do it and whatnot? So Sarah, if you want to write that down as an action item, I'll take it doing, you know, charter renewal training sometime during the school year. Um, for the board, you know, what, making part of the board meeting. And again, like I said earlier, if, if there's any topics that you think we should add to any kind of board education calendar or whatever, um, it doesn't have to be too formal, but anything that you think, um, we should know better as trustees, that it would be good to make that a little bit more of a recurring thing. You know, we always have a board education topic. All right. With that, I think we're ready for the committee reports. So.
Uh, Raul, one, one, one topic for, uh, board training, especially for new board members, would be a refresher on open, open meeting law.
Yeah. Well, and that one we kind of already have, but it's good, good to, um,
But we have it on this school year.
Yeah, good, good to have it on the list. Yeah. Anything else? Otherwise, Roger is a good segue to turn it over to finance. So I don't know if the, you or Bella, either one of you can give the finance something.
Bella is going to do finance. Bella is gonna do finance.
I'm happy to. Um, so we spent the past finance meeting, but past two meetings talking about our goals. Um, and I think we made a lot of progress, um, this past meeting, um, and we documented some of our goals in Board on Track. Um, one of, I think the first goal, I think, was to ensure that adequate policies and procedures are in place for optimal finance governance. So we started talking about, well, what does that mean? Um, so we started putting down some subtasks, like we'd like to review all of our existing policies, um, the, we'd like to review the list of policies. Uh, we'd like to put it all in one central location. You know, we, we found a place on Board on Track that we would like to, you know, put it, house it there so that everyone can look at them. Um, and we wanna evaluate them, you know, periodically. Um, we haven't really set down, you know, when we're gonna do this because there's a lot going on within the finance committee this year with the building project. Um, every, you know, Liana, her hands are everywhere and, and they're in the contract negotiations. They're in the, the building project. We have to do the next year's budget. We have capital investment plan. So there's a lot of things that we currently do already. Um, and so there are some objectives that we wanna document as well. And so that will put into Board on Track as well. Um, some, you know, financial objectives. Um, and then another important, uh, goal is um, like a communication plan to increase awareness to all stakeholders. And I, I really think Lisa did a great job today. She's kicked us off with the tuition, um, education. So it's just maybe, I, you know, I, I'm thinking of, thinking of them as more like modules. You know, there's tuition, there's the budget, um, there's capital investment. So, um, you know, we wanna put together, um, I think material to educate not only the board, but the rest of the community. Um, something that again can probably be put on Board on Track, um, and it'd be great onboarding material for new board members. So I think, you know, every, every meeting will probably defining more and talking a little bit more of what our tasks are, but that's where we are right now.
No, that, that's awesome. And I think it's important, even if we have multiple goals that that is gonna take us more than this full year to accomplish, just having that as the plan is worth it. So in, sometimes we feel like, oh, we shouldn't have more, but you know, the, the day-to-day is gonna get in the way. So the, the reason for the goal setting is to have the long-term view in mind and then we'll, we'll get to it when, uh, as time goes by when, when it makes sense. So I, I think that progress is very important and I'm glad you guys have been gone through that. Excellent. All right, anything else from finance? Yeah, no, Roger, anybody else? Good. So then we'll turn it over to education, Roger.
All right, thank you, Raul. Um, education's only very short. Uh, we have our, we did not meet in December. Our next meeting is scheduled for January eleventh and we will be focusing on preparing for the, uh, school, the uh, family and staff survey at start kickoff in the January eleventh meeting.
I'm sure that'll be a fun conversation. Yeah, and for those of you that might not be familiar, we had a separate task force before for that and this time we're trying making that part of education. Uh, so we don't have to create a new task force and that will be part of what the committee does. So I'll, I'll participate in that meeting to try and make sure I share what, what, you know, my experience with doing that in the last seven years, I think, that I've been doing the survey. So, uh, looking forward to that. All right, um, next up is governance, Samini.
Same, um, I wasn't able to provide an update last time, but I think you guys handled it and thank you because I wasn't able to be there. Uh, we did not meet between the last, uh, round and this board meeting. We're looking forward to meeting on the tenth, um, and then, uh, basically we'll be looking at an employee handbook review. We have been working on our committee goals ourselves and one of the things, Bella, it was really nice to see that you're using Board on Track and you're sort of going through the goals. Um, we've been doing something very similar. And in the subtasks, we've been assigning owners, uh, right off the bat. That's been very helpful because we then check in and see what progress has been made. And so there's a single owner per task and I think that keeps us all kinda going. Uh, one thing I wish Board on Track would do is to give me a clear set of, okay, here are all the tasks you have to complete. I'm not sure there's a way to do that. But if there is, I would love to see it, um, because I have to go dig into each of the goals to see if there's anything assigned to me. Um, and then governance will look at a proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar. Uh, I can't believe we're looking at the next year already, but that's exciting. Uh, and then we'll, uh, collect any other agenda items that are coming up for governance. So it's a busy start to the year and we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, now that I have homework for next week, I'll make sure I complete it before then.
Yeah, that was a subtle reminder.
Yes.
No, I'm just kidding. I was going and looking at my own stuff and saying, okay, what task do I have to finish? So I think it'd be good to look at all of this. Thank you, Raul.
All right, thank you. And last but not least, uh, development, if they're saying you wanna add more to your original update on the capital campaign?
Um, just with the development committee, our, our tiny little group, um, I'm gonna connect with Marcy and we're gonna talk, we're gonna continue the conversation about figuring out the best role for the committee to play since there is, like I mentioned last time, such overlap with, um, the managing committee as well. Um, and now that we're gonna be looking to see who out of our small little group is going to, um, represent the, the board, um, over the foundation. Um, you know, we've got a couple of things to discuss, also figuring out how we're gonna move forward with, um, the, the tasks and activities that will move development forward past the capital campaign, right? I think that's really the role for the development committee. So we're gonna figure out how to best do that and, um, we'll take it from there.
Excellent. Yeah, and I think we've talked about that already today. So looking forward to that. You know, forming that partnership and, and using all the resources we have for, for the best. All right, with that, I feel like we're pretty good on time, right, Evan?
We are so good on time.
Still good on time, all right. Uh, anything else that anybody might want to bring up, any other business? Again, like I mentioned, we will be sharing more details about the, the meeting on the twenty-seventh, but for now, just save the date and looking forward to meeting everybody. I assume we're gonna meet at the school, it's probably the easiest. Um, so we'll, we'll see everybody then. We'll share more details about how we're gonna use that time, but looking forward to doing some strategic planning and in the meantime, you know, keep the channels open and happy twenty twenty-four, everybody. Any other comments, questions, concerns? No, Mike briefly came off mute. You got anything, Mike?
I was just preparing to say happy new year and good night to everyone.
All right. So if that's the case, then I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Bella.
Thank you.
You hear a second? I'll second it. Raul seconds. You hear a real call, Sarah?
Bella?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Gil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
And so Mimi?
Yes.
All right. Have a great twenty twenty-four. See you guys in a few weeks.